Good afternoon, everyone. I now like to declare the meeting officially open. I'd like to remind everyone that in according with Council's Code of Meeting Practice, other than the public forum section, this meeting is being livestreamed. To start off today's proceeding, I would like to invite Reverend Bruce Hammonds from Liverpool Presbyterian Church to read the offer prayer for council and the acknowledgement of the country. Could I invite everyone to please stand?
First of all, I'd like to thank you for your hospitality and kind invitation. It's good to chat with a couple of you beforehand. I want to assure you that the Presbyterian Church in Liverpool prays for council constantly every week and during our prayer meetings. I'm also the chaplain for the Sixth Aviation Regiment at Holsworthy, and we lost the MRH-90 at the end of July. And I want to thank the mayor and council for the letters, which I personally handed to each of the four families. So, thank you for that, and your support has been very much appreciated. So, thank you. We acknowledge that God, having created the world and all that's in it, with respect, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present. The Cabragol clan of the Darug nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Darawal and Darug nations. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of this city and the well-being of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their background, their race, or their creed. We affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in this, our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, for the mayor, the councillors, and the staff at council, and all those associated with good government here in Liverpool. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Our great God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, Father, we want to thank you for the quality of life and freedom we enjoy in Australia. As we are part of a world that has so much trauma, we pray for the innocent Israelis and Palestinians who are suffering so much at the moment, and pray for peace in Israel and Palestine. We pray for peace in the Ukraine and for those who are suffering in that land. And wherever there is conflict around the world, we do pray for peace. As we've just celebrated Remembrance Day, we thank you for those who have paid for our freedom in the past and those who currently serve in our army, our navy, and our air force. Help us to be a healthy, multi-ethnic community, to have a united culture, and as a nation to know peace and unity. Help us to enjoy and reflect your great love for us, which was demonstrated when you gave your one and only Son, so that whoever believes in Him receives forgiveness and newness of life. Father, we thank you for our emergency services, paid and volunteers. With so much pain in this world, we thank you that this nation has been so blessed by you and for our strong Christian heritage, which makes this a home for so many from all around the world who have escaped from a lack of freedom, from disease, and famine, and war. We pray for our Prime Minister Anthony Albanese and Opposition Leader Peter Dutton, along with our Premier Chris Minns and Opposition Leader Mark Speakman. And we pray for all who serve with them in government and opposition. We pray for strong and stable government for many years to come. Father, we thank you for this city of Liverpool. We thank you for the long heritage our city has enjoyed. We thank you that in recent decades, so many have come to live here from all around the world to find that safety and security and share in the Aussie way of life. We pray everyone who moves here may find the blessing that you give and to know your divine hand of blessing in their lives. We pray everyone who makes this nation and this city their home may find healing from their past, and they may have hope for the future. We pray for our council, for our mayor Ned Munne, for our councillors, and the many hard-working men and women who provide the many services which keep our city functioning. We pray for unity and peace among everyone who works and lives in our city and trust you to continue to bless our community well into the future. Bless this meeting. We pray for all who speak. We pray, Lord, that you would give them peace and clarity of thought and word, and that they will be confident as they express what is on their heart, as they desire to do what is good for our community. Father, we thank you for our past, trust your wisdom and guidance for our present, and commit ourselves to you for our future, in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Australians, oh let us rejoice, for we are one and free. We've golden soil and wealth for toil, our home is good by sea. Our land abounds in nature's gifts of beauty, rich and rare. In history's page, let every stage advance Australia fair. Be joyful strains that led us sing, advance Australia where. We'll meet the radiant southern cross, we'll toll with hearts and hands to make this common wealth of us renowned of all the lands. For those who've come across the seas, we've found lots of place to share. With courage, let us all combine to advance Australia fair. Be joyful strains that led us sing, advance Australia fair.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Thank you very much, Reverend Hammonds, for your kind words for council and your prayers and your best wishes for everyone, and we really appreciate for all that you and your congregation do for our community.
God bless you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Councillors, we have, I think, four councillors attending remotely today. Councillor Green, Hagerty, Calianda, and Carney. Can I move that they be allowed to attend remotely? Move councillor Munne. Seconded, Deputy Mayor, all those in favour, against, declare that carried. We have no apologies. We have one condolence motion today. For Dr Harry Herrenath, OAM. It is with great sadness that I offer my deepest condolences to the family of Dr Gurur Harry Herrenath, OAM. Dr Herrenath was a gentle giant of the Indian Australian community, a GP, a family man, and a very decent human being. A friend to many of us here in Liverpool, Dr Herrenath's warm presence and kind spirit will be sorely missed. A champion for unity, Dr Herrenath was extended the honour of being the first chairperson emeritus appointed to the Multicultural New South Wales Advisory Board. The honour was bestowed by the Premier of New South Wales and the Minister for Multiculturalism. Dr Herrenath stepped down from the role of chairperson of the Multicultural New South Wales Advisory Board at the end of June 2022, a position he held for eight years. Dr Herrenath was awarded an Order of the Australia Medal in 2009 Queen's Birthday Honours for service to cricket through executive roles at state and national level and to the community. He was also awarded the Pravasi Baharatia Saman Medal by the President of India in 2017, the highest honour conferred to Indians living overseas. May he rest in eternal peace. I'd like to move that we have a minute's silence. Can I ask everyone to please stand?
I do. Jason Blair has said that he believed he drew the main issue. I haven't been particularly critical of Jason, other than I would like him to take a tough stand, particularly in making that statement. I mean, to possibly counsel these shows that students who wish how they are not allowed to go to their chests. There are enough of some seniors who are most important, and I've made very few examples that students do not look around their head that they're supposed to not go to. So, I do get the potential of them to tell a chappie. It's like, um, it's still the values to which we're just going.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Next item we have is a confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting held on 25th of October. Do I have a mover? Move councillor Hadeed. Seconded councillor Harrell. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Are there any declarations of interest?
I've got two. First one, Conf 06, non-procurnary. It's a significant, and I will leave the chamber.
Which item was that? Please councillor Hadeed.
Conf 06.
06.
And the second one, Plan 02, non-procurnary, less insignificant, but I will leave the room as well.
Great. Do you have the forms? Mr Portelli?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I have a conflict of interest declaration to make in regard to the same item. Confidential 06, page 827, item 58, in relation to the Australian Islamic House in Liverpool. It's non-financial and less insignificant and obviously remain.
Thank you. Are there any further ones?
I have a conflict of interest on Plan 01. It's a non-procurnary, less than significant, and I will be leaving the room on that, as I previously provided advice on that matter when I was not an elected official.
If I can please get the paperwork. Councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, Conf 01.
Can you, um... We just need to, please, um, can you just, we just can't hear you too good. If we can just adjust, can you speak closer to the microphone?
Mr Mayor?
Thank you.
I've got one also on confidential 06.
Sorry, one sec. Let's get... Are you still online? Are you still talking councillor Hagerty, or are you trying to fix it? Councillor Calianda, do you want to see if we can hear your audio?
I believe it's Conf 08, the Australia Day Awards.
It's the AC.
All right, is that better?
Now, can you speak for a little bit, please?
Yep, sure. So, I believe it's Conf 08, the Australia Day Awards. One of the recipients is known to me through my work in the community. It's non-significant, non-procurnary, so I will stay in the room.
Al, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes, just speak up as loud as you can, please, for those who are online.
Okay. Conf, same as councillor Calianda, Conf 08, less insignificant, non-procurnary, I'll stay in the room. And Conf 01, Grant, one of the recipients, I'm an ordinary member of, less insignificant, non-procurnary, I'll stay in the room.
Are there any further ones?
Yes, one more from here.
Yes.
Confidential 06, the Australian Islamic House. Non-procurnary, non-significant, I'll stay in the room.
Okay, lovely. Thank you. We'll now move on to the public forum. We have four speakers today. The first one is Ms Batul Salaman, who would like to address council on the conflict in Gaza, Palestine.
Urgency motion is to call on the federal government for urgent ceasefire and peace negotiations in the Middle East. B, work with the international community to end the humanitarian disaster unfolding in Gaza, and it near 1 million Palestinian children, and to restore access to food, electricity, water, fuel, medicine for around 2 million Palestinian civilians in Gaza. That council writes to Penny Wong and to Anthony Albanese to notify them of this motion and to express our support for the Palestinian people in the region. Thank you.
Well, Mr Mayor, I'm happy to second it. If you're all in favour, we're adding some paragraph.
I accept that as an urgency motion. I accept that as an urgency motion.
Thank you. Can I also add to that, if possible? We've got an upcoming event. If we can do that in honour of the Women of Gaza as well, that'll be great. The event is, sorry, International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women.
So, you want to dedicate that to and have that as about the Women of Gaza?
Please.
Yeah. So, yeah, are you happy to second that?
Yeah, I'm seconding it. We're adding some paragraph to it.
Yep.
If accepted by councillor Munne, that council call on the Israeli government to urge a ceasefire of peace negotiation in the Middle East. B, work with the international community to the end. If we can put C, call on the Israeli government.
Can you speak closer to the microphone so we can hear you a bit clearer, councillor?
Call on, sorry. Israeli government call on the Israeli government to implement all United Nations Security Council resolutions, relates to the conflict in the Middle East. Thank you.
Just to make sure the wording is up there. Councillor, did you want to speak for your motion?
It's actually very difficult to speak about the motion, simply because of what we're seeing on TV over the past 45 days. 7,000 children have died. 4,000 women have died in this conflict. When does it end? When can we stand up and say enough is enough on both sides? We are humans. We watch this day out and day out. Why do we need to see this stuff? Why can't we live in peace? It's about time we stand up and we say enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers for or against?
Mayor, I'd like to speak in support of this motion.
Yep, go for it.
Look, as previous speakers have mentioned, it's incredibly, I've heard from many community members about the trauma, the vicarious trauma that many are experiencing, watching sometimes family members die in horrific circumstances. I was very moved by the speaker at the beginning of, in the public forum earlier, who obviously communicated some of the distress that is being experienced in the community. I think, you know, and I'm wondering if the mover and the second would be happy to incorporate this. I think, also, I think it's important to include, you know, practical measures to support those in our, you know, direct community who are affected and who are experiencing distress in relation to what they're seeing and hearing on the news. So, perhaps including an aspect of the motion that, you know, calls for, you know, whether it's practical support or mental health support, whatever it might be in terms of supporting those in our community who are seeing this and who are experiencing distress.
So, do you want to clarify that into some points?
Sure. I think perhaps adding a part three in term to, maybe to work with local community organisations to provide support for those who are experiencing trauma or mental health distress as a result of, you know, as a result of events in the Middle East currently.
Right. And if we can add to that, including...
Sorry, work with local community organisations. Because, you know, whilst I appreciate the sentiment in terms of dedicating the upcoming day to the Women of Gaza, I think it's also incredibly important to acknowledge the very real harms that people within our community are experiencing. And as council, it should be our role to provide support and assistance to those who are immediately feeling, some of those who are feeling that distress. And I also think it is, you know, very important for council within our role as a moderator of community sentiment, of, you know, community support, to also acknowledge that there can be those in our community who are experiencing racism, discrimination, or other forms of, you know, blowback as a result of this. And so, I think it's important for, you know, within our community to, for council to do as much as we can to protect those who might be experiencing, whether it's Islamophobia or antisemitism, to work within the remit of our role as, you know, to navigate community sentiment and encourage community harmony.
So, is that part of your point, or is it, um...
Would the mover and second...
Are the mover and second happy with that? Yep, happy with that.
Mr Mayor, I'd like to add a point to this.
Yes.
That council thanks the community for their peaceful protests regarding the overseas conflicts, and encourages people to be respectful in their protests.
To continue being peaceful, you mean?
To continue, to be, to continue to be respectful.
Continue or remain, probably be the word.
Are there any other speakers for or against?
I'll speak for it, Mayor, if possible.
Yeah, please go for it.
Yep. Look, I think this is a sensible motion. I think we've all been distressed by what we've seen. You know, every time we pick up the phone and put on Twitter or put on some bit of social media...
Sorry, can you speak a bit, councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, sorry, just saying, this has been personally very, very distressing since the events of October 7, and every time I, you know, pick up the phone and look at the news, I look at social media, I, you know, I feel deeply disturbed by what I'm seeing, and I can't imagine how people with family and historical links to the area must feel. And also, as a state MP, I've had people literally come in shaking in tears to my office, upset about this issue. And I have, as a member of the Parliamentary Friends of Palestine, I have signed a statement. And as I said, I think this is a sensible, well-measured motion, and I'm heartened to hear news earlier today that there has been work on a ceasefire. Alas, that's only for five days, but I do think we need to continue to work for a permanent ceasefire and for a peaceful resolution to this conflict.
Thank you, councillor. Anyone else want to speak for or against? And I'll just, I'll just want to acknowledge that, yes, the councillor Hagerty and councillor Calianda are both two MPs who both signed the letter from the Friends of, the Parliamentary Friends of Palestine, congratulate you for doing so. If I can say a few words, one thing is we've always maintained as councils, obviously, keeping everything local is what we do. In Australia, we have, we play a very fundamental role in that. Liverpool is the heart of multicultural Australia. It's literally where everyone lives together in peace, in harmony, in unity. Other places in Australia claim multiculturalism, but the reality is they don't live it and breathe it and see it every single day like we do as a community. We literally have everyone living here together. And if anyone knows it, if everyone hasn't seen it, walk down Macquarie Street, walk down George Street, come to a citizenship ceremonies and shake their hands and give them the certificate and participate with the over 3,000 new Australians who have come from war-torn countries, who have come from countries where they have suffered injustices. When George Bush decides to attack Iraq, the ripple effect in the White House in Washington, the ripple effects are felt here in Liverpool, because those refugees, those people who are displaced, the innocent victims, end up calling Liverpool home, and we welcome them, and we'll continue to welcome them, welcome them. There is no doubt that what happens in people's motherlands, or what happens overseas, or any injustice anywhere, has an effect on us here as a community. We must do everything at all costs to preserve the beautiful multicultural tapestry that Australia has. We are so lucky to be in this country, and we're all, as migrants, we all want to give so much more back to this country, and I think we do that all the time. What is challenging to see is that the significant double standards that we are seeing by those in positions of power, the selective sympathy where one group of people can be sympathised yet while other ones' people are claimed they're expendable, and that is not fair. To see, to have 6,000 Palestinian children killed by the Israeli government, the Netanyahu government, is unjust, is not fair, and it can no way be justified. And the biggest challenge is, how do you try to explain that to your kids? How do you go out there and say to your kids, they're, they've been used as human shields? Yeah, that they're, it's their fault? The biggest one, other than the significant and terrible loss of life overseas, that I think the effect that we're going to be feeling here is where people feel that the fair goal that we all live by as Australians has not been applied to the innocent Palestinians. They want their state. They deserve their state. It's their right to have their state. And the only way we deliver, we get rid of extremism on both sides, the extremists in Hamas, the extremists in the far-right government of Netanyahu, is by having a peaceful two-state solution. And the longer we move around from that, the longer we will have this, as the speaker mentioned, mowing the grass. Have anyone heard that term? That is an official term by the Israeli government, where they go into Gaza every few years and they bomb it. It's fact, read it there. You have members of the government, of the ministry, threatening the use of nuclear weapons on Gaza. Said it publicly in recent times. Where is the outrage? Where do we stand up against that? You have had other ministers saying they all, people from Gaza should be expelled and end up in the Sinai Desert. Let's not forget that Israel's a democracy, and if you look at that democracy, there have been protests every week in Gaza, sorry, every week in Israel against the government of Netanyahu. There has been, I think it's four elections, sorry, three elections in four years, because they're not able to put together a government. Putting aside what's happening in Gaza and the West Bank, over 200 Palestinians have been killed by settlers who are going out there and stealing their land. What is the government doing out there? Where are they being condemned? All we ask for is peace. We see, we want peace, we want harmony. We see here in Australia, and I think if the world is going to prosper, we need to ensure that there is a peaceful two-state solution where innocent Israelis, innocent... we need to ensure that there is a peaceful two-state solution where innocent Israelis, innocent, where Israelis and Palestinians can live together in peace and harmony together, because I think that's what it is. So thank you councillor for bringing up the motion and for all the support. Thank you councillor Haggerty and councillor Caliander for your leadership in the parliament on this issue and thank you Batul for your words here. And I encourage everyone, this is not something that we can turn away with, we can't just put down our phones, watch the videos because that's the reality. Injustice everywhere, injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere. So, thank you everyone and I um, I'll now, if there's no further speakers, I'll put the motion. All those in favour?
Just, can, can, can we just modify something here? It's not too important, but just a matter of respect. Number two, that council write to the Foreign Minister, Miss Penny Wong, and to the Prime Minister, Mr Anthony Albanese. Just a matter of respect, thank you.
Let's throw in Chris Means, all we had.
Can we add Chris Means, the-
Chair motion councillor.
Yeah, please, can we add um, Chris Means, the Premier?
Done, all good? Yes.
We need to make a suggestion. We need to make a suggestion, the Prime Minister's name should go first, the Foreign Minister Penny Wong should go second, New South Wales Premier should go third, that's the appropriate way for them to be described.
Thank you. No, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, I declare it unanimous.
Mayor, can I um, request that it be, yeah, uh, it's already recorded unanimously, thanks.
Yep. Thank you, we'll now move on to- mayoral minutes, just get them in order. Um, Liverpool, this one's about federal government infrastructure cuts. Liverpool's transport networks are undergoing severe duress and congestion due to lack of state and federal investment and planning. I must express my profound disappointment at the recent infrastructure funding cuts by the federal government, particularly regarding the cancellation of cruiser projects in South West Sydney. The cancellation of the hundred and sixty million toward, toward the M seven M twelve interchange and fifteen million toward the Western Sydney Road Transport Network is devastating news. It's vital that the federal government reinstate and implement these upgrade, vital upgrades before our communities are left grappling with enduring repercussions. It's disheartening that while Liverpool City Council is under pressure to meet with increasing demand for housing, the promised upgraded infrastructure vital for supporting this growth has been withdrawn. This lack of support from the federal government will significantly impact our community for years to come, especially in the areas surrounding the new airport. Transport for New South Wales previously advised that the federal and state governments in March twenty twenty-two provided the funding for the agency to prioritise and prepare strategic business cases for seven RTO roads to support development of the Western Sydney Aeropole Precinct Plan. Of the seven roads that were to be prioritised, six are in the Liverpool law government area. One, the Eastern Ring Road, to replace the northern section of Badger Creek Road to be closed to accommodate the future additional runway. Two, Devonshire Road. Three, Badger Creek Road South. Four, Bradfield Metrolink, a new road between Devonshire Road and Eastern Ring Road. Uh, five, uh, Pitt Street, and most importantly, I would say Fifteenth Avenue West, extension to Badger Creek Road South. The prioritised roads include four roads which are currently local roads under the care and control of council. It is expected that after project delivery by Transport for New South Wales, most of these roads apart from Pitt Street would be reclassified as state government roads to be managed by the agency. With the announced withdrawal of federal government funding, the state government will have to allocate funds from Western Sydney Aeropole's developed contribution for the road network to continue. I note that our neighbouring LGAs face similar challenges. It's apparent that all South West Sydney councils, including Liverpool, Campbelltown, Camden, Fairfield and Wollondoo, unite in urging stronger commitment from the state and federal government for infrastructure delivery. The impending surge in traffic, particularly due to the airport and aeropolis, require immediate action upon uh, on critical road infrastructure upgrades and that have been regrettably axed. I call upon all stakeholders to collaborate and advocate vigorously for the reinstatement and swift delivery of these essential infrastructure projects, ensuring the sustained growth and wellbeing of our community. One, I would like to move that council writes to Prime Minister Anthony Albanese, Federal Treasurer Jim Charles and the Honourable Catherine King, Minister for Infrastructure, to call for the reinstatement of the hundred and sixteen million dollars towards the M seven M twelve interchange and the fifteen million dollars towards the Western Sydney Road Transport Network, noting that both projects are crucial for the connectivity of the Western Sydney International Airport and Growth Areas. Two, express council's strong opposition to the Australian Government's decision to cut significant infrastructure funding from important projects across New South Wales, noting that the infrastructure funding cuts will hamper the ability of communities to accommodate growth and increase housing supply and, and harm productivity improvements required for the growing freight task. Three, council writes the Honourable to the Premier seeking New South Wales Government's support for joint advocacy on this matter to the Australian Government. Council Haggerty?
Thank you, Mayor, that's a mayoral minute, but um, I'd just like permission to speak in favour of this motion, if that's possible?
Yeah, sorry, can you speak, I kind of missed that, what you said.
Um, just, uh, just um, would like to speak in favour of this motion if-
Yeah, I heard that bit, yep.
Yep, um, I've been quite vocal about this in the media and I also spoke about it in parliament. Um, in, in relation to the M seven M twelve project, it's underway. Anyone who's driven past there in the last couple of months would have seen that earthworks are underway and uh, there are regular project updates on the website that tell you that work is underway. Uh, it is uh, a road, in order to get to the airport, you need to go along the M twelve. In order to get on the M twelve, you need to go along the M seven and, and you do that via this M seven M twelve interchange. The airport is a federal government project, uh, and, and this project uh, must have support from uh, the federal government. I note the comments of the, the State Treasurer, uh, who said this project will quickly be completed. He's expressed his disappointment, I've expressed my, uh, I think I use the word extreme disappointment in relation to this decision. Uh, and I can uh, reassure everyone here and, and watching online that I've spoken to both the um, the local federal member uh, and uh, the ministers uh, within, within the state government and um, have urged them to, to sort this out and, and um, ensure that, that uh, this is funded and, and that they look at uh, further funding for, for infrastructure in this area. So, uh, yeah, I strongly support this motion.
Thank you, any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, I declare it unanimous. Um, councillor, I just want to, I'm going to defer the other, I'll do the other mayoral minutes a bit later on. I just want to get us into the, um, get us into the agenda and get some moving, get moving. Um, so we'll move on to Plan Zero One, which is page sixty, tab one, recommendation on page sixty-one, and that's about um, Hoxton Park. Could I invite the Deputy Mayor to come take the chair while I step out, please?
Thank you. So we move on to Plan Zero One on page sixty with a recommendation on page sixty-one. I'd like to move the recommendation as per the book. Is there a seconda?
I'll second that.
Councillor, yes?
I'd like to say it deferred, please, because the residence issues um, are quite, they are serious, they need to be properly um, uh, properly heard. Uh, the continuing um, matters of compliance on the site, uh, it's unconscionable.
Can I just ask, councillor Green, sorry, do you have a second for the deferral?
I'll uh, second her motion.
Councillor Rhodes, thank you.
Thank you. It's unconscionable to extend uh, in principle, support uh, at this particular um, junction of time. Uh, I think the issue, uh, I think one of the issues, it sends very uh, confusing messages to the um, to the proponent in that these things are keeping going and yet the compliance issues, which are quite serious, are still um, are still ongoing and in good faith. I cannot, um, I, I would, would like to move this motion, it'd be deferred, subject to uh, a consultation with residents via a public meeting as soon as is practical.
So, so are you deferring to the next meeting, the next council meeting, or a general deferral or a governance committee meeting?
Uh, we'd put, well, I'd like it deferred, uh, subject to the consultation with residents via a public meeting as soon as is practical. So if that means that the public meeting is either held before Christmas or as soon as possible, then so be it. Um, it's, as I say, it's unconscionable to uh, extend in principle support, given the compliance issues that have been going on since, what, September, October of this year.
Councillor Green, can I just, can I just clarify, so you want to have public consultation on compliance issues on the site as is, or on this planning proposal that's before us at the moment?
The, the planning proposal as it is at the moment. So I'm saying that, that deferring should not, we should not be supporting it to go to gateway.
So, uh, if I may, um, uh, councillor Green, perhaps we should defer this subject to consultation with residents in regards to the uh, the, the um, objectivity of increasing the height, because it's already zoned, such, so it's only the height that is in question. And I think that if we sort of pointed that out and also uh, have the public meeting if you want and uh, a report brought back to council as soon as practical from that public consultation would probably serve better.
Can I just ask through-
I'm happy to accept that.
Through the director, we have done some public consultation?
Yep, through the CEO, we've undertaken public consultation after it was tabled at the last meeting and if it does proceed to the department, there'll be further consultation once Gateway is given.
Can, can I uh, speak for this motion as to why I think it's probably better deferred? Um, uh, the reason why I was uh, willing to second this motion was because of the previous motion the mayor just made. This is a very conflicting question to be put before council. Yes, we have a part of the government saying we must create housing, but we also know that in doing this, we are creating great uh, issues with regards to traffic. I point out that this Hoxton Park Road runs into Fifteenth Avenue. It's going to be the major route, our fast transport route to the airport. And if we duplicate what has happened or could possibly happen here along Hoxton Park Road in a two-lane traffic mode, tell me, is that going to be a fast track route to the, to the airport? I don't think so. It does deserve at least being deferred so that we can discuss this. It's not, uh, it's just that it is conflicting, council, in that we are, are being asked by the state government to increase our housing and we're being asked by the constituents to consider, to consider the traffic implications if we do proceed along this vein along what is proposed to be our fast route to the airport. I think if at least we could see traffic plans that would satisfy our constituents that uh, we, we are looking at all avenues, I would feel a lot more comfortable.
But those, those traffic issues, aren't they raised during DA stage?
This is-
I didn't hear that.
So the, the question was, the traffic issues are usually addressed during the DA stage, not the planning proposal stage? I'll ask through the director if that's okay, through-
Through the CEO, uh, there'll be agency consultation if Gateway was issued and there will also be um, Transport for New South Wales consultation as part of the DA process as well.
So does that mean it's got nothing to do with this actual proposal? Does it have anything to do with this proposal?
Through the CEO, we have considered transport impacts at this time with the proposal. Um, and it's deemed acceptable from the officer's perspective, but there will be further consideration as part of the Gateway process, NDA process, as with any other planning proposal.
Thank you. Uh, in- Councillor Hall? Just let me hear from Councillor Hall.
There are a couple of issues, actually, there are quite a few issues here. First of all, the issue currently is that there is illegal material deposit on the site and council is taking legal action, or the EPA is taking legal action against whoever owns that site and has done that. That's issue number one. The other, the other issue is that I have is, is this development, in my view, is totally inappropriate for that area. To increase the uh, the height of the building by one additional floor is totally out of character within the area. I know it's R four and in Flowerdale Road, there is one building that happens to be five stories and the only reason that went to five stories is because of the affordable housing, which granted them increases. But where this is at the moment, opposite, you have three-story places. When, if this were to go to six stories, which is what's implied, and also the floor space ratio is increased by fifty percent, it means you're going to increase that area with an enormously uh, inappropriate number of additional units. That area, and I happen to know the area very well, I lived there, used to live there. Dale Avenue is a very narrow road. If we're going to allow all those units to go onto that property, that means that, that traffic that's generated is going to have to go on a very narrow road. The road is already problematic. Adding all that extra traffic to that is going to cause considerable additional problems in the area. Also note that Memorial Avenue, which Dale Avenue feeds into, has restrictions on traffic flow. In the morning until ten o'clock, no traffic can get out of there. It has to go via either Maryvale Avenue, which also has no uh, right turn access onto Hoxton Park Road. In other words, overall, the traffic management in that area has major issues. And this is what those residents have complained about. Now, if you're going to allow this to happen, it, as I said, it's totally inappropriate. There were thirty submissions and the majority of those were concerned about the traffic. Now, we're also going to say that in this particular development, one of the proposals is to have shops in there. Now, having shops in there and the only access is off Dale Avenue, remember, there's really no access, no vehicle access off Hoxton Park Road. The RMS or Transport for New South Wales won't let you do that. There is no current access for buildings or properties along Hoxton Park Road on that side of the road that have access to traffic. So as I said, the traffic problems are going to be enormous, particularly if you allow shopping, shop, shops to be in that area as well. Remember too, that further down the road, about two hundred and fifty metres, there is a shopping centre. There's Aldi, there's Kentucky Fried Chicken, a whole lot of other places there as well. So it's not as if it's absolutely necessary to have shops in that area. And also on Maryvale Avenue itself, there is a small shopping centre. So there really is no reason to have shops in there. I think there's a site, the, the site, the proposal is way, the proposition is way over development of that very, very narrow section of road. Residents are not going to be happy with that at all.
So councillor Hall, I take it you're speaking for a deferral?
To be honest, I don't know what a deferral will do. I do not believe that this is appropriate at all. I will be voting against it, no matter which way it goes.
Are there any other speakers? Councillor Rhodes?
Uh, yes, look, uh, the reason why I think we should at least defer it is so that we can discuss this thoroughly. If Transport New South Wales has stuff that we should know about, well, then I think that it's appropriate that we know. This road, let me point out, is our fast transport access to the airport. And I want to know how that is actually going to be maintained if we continue to put developments alike this along Hoxton Park Road. I also want to point out that we do have a problem and it's a problem that we're consistently hearing about, where emergency vehicles have trouble accessing and would have trouble accessing this particular development because the only way in is again a road that is-
development, because the only way in is again a road that is too narrow, narrow, to allow an emergency vehicle through if we have parking on either side of that road. There are lots of issues that need to be addressed to make us feel confident that the infrastructure is going to be there, that is going to allow a development like this to proceed. And if this is our opportunity to speak up for the community on the issues that they're raised, we have got to do that. So I'm in support of a deferral. Let's talk about it. Let's see if there are ways that these issues for the constituents can be addressed. I'm not satisfied that it will be handled at the DA stage. I think that we have to be proactive. We know that there are issues. Let's see if there is some way that they can be sorted out. Thank you.
Councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, um, I'm, uh, also in favour of the deferment. Um, I appreciate that, um, the area is, is, um, owned for high, high, you know, high density, medium density, and we do need to have a serious look about whether we have medium and high density along, uh, our transport corridors, and that includes the T-way, and I've spoken to the, the relevant director about this. Uh, but what I do have a problem with is, is something that councillor, um, Hall raised, which is the, the scale of this particular development. Um, it's got access to good, you know, good public transport, which is, uh, where we want to do density, but it's the level of density here that I have a concern about, and, and also those other concerns about the, the back streets and, and some of the other issues, uh, about the current state of that site. So, uh, we need medium density, uh, along our transport corridors, but let's get it right.
Thank you. And councillor Caliander?
So I, I'd also like to, um, to kind of express my concerns about the nature of the development and...
So can I just double check? You're speaking in favour of a deferral?
Yes, I am. Yes. Um, yes, I'd, I'd also like to sort of express my concern about, um, the nature of the development, um, and also the, um, I guess the, the importance of engaging with the people who will have to live with the outcomes of, um, what is proposed here. You know, for, for too long, for so many years, we have had a system where basically we kind of, you know, go through all of these, these processes, and yet when things that, uh, you know, when, when things don't go to plan at the end of the day, when the outcomes that people are forced to live with, um, are not what was, you know, sold, um, at the beginning of the process, there is nobody that is held accountable, and a deferral will help, and, sorry, not just a deferral, but further engagement and consultation with residents who are the ones that, as I said, will have to live with the outcome of this, um, will ensure that they at least are able to sort of provide informed input into the, uh, into the process, um, and so that we, we're not just kind of acting on assumptions and, um, you know, what, what may or may not occur down at the end of the road, and we actually kind of put the people who are going to live with, with these things at the heart of the decisions that we make.
Okay, thank you. Uh, final comments. Councillor Goodman, you speaking for or against a deferral?
Against a deferral.
Please.
I don't, I don't see what a deferral is going to do if we deferred it from August till now. That was, we've had three months. We've had three months for a def- we deferred it three months ago. So I don't see what another deferral is going to do. And when we say it's, uh, it's going to be too much, and on Flowerdale Road, they've got it through affordable housing, what's stopping the developer going through affordable housing on this one if we just reject this one?
Thank you. Councillor Amun?
I'd like to speak for. Simply, it's been deferred...
For the deferral?
No, no.
Against the deferral?
Against the def- for the motion. Um, we can see here that it's been deferred before, and we've gone through a recommendation from the people that know the area, and they have consulted with the community. They've got their concerns at mind. We've gone back and forward now for the past three months to try and get the right reports, to satisfy council and our planning measures, right, to be able to pass this through to the next level so we can actually consult with the community properly and get their ideas on how we can resolve these issues. Now, we're asking for a deferral again to try, to seek either consultation or to find out. So what, what's there to find out? If, if you read the report and the recommendation, you should, we should be able to make a determination based on that. This is asking us to say, yes, we would like to seek more information on this, on this. Let's give it the opportunity. Let's give the constituents the opportunity to come back to us with what they want, but through the right channels. Deferring this is only going to make it worse for us. Either we should make a call on it, yes, or no. So I call on other councillors to stand up and say, yes, we are for this, or we are against this. Deferring it for another two or three months is not going to change anything as per what councillor Goodman said, because we've deferred it already, seeking consultation with the community. We've gotten 30 submissions back, or 28 according to the, um, to the report, right? And what are we saying now? We need more consultation? From who? The same people? So I, I believe we are not giving, how can I say this in, in, in a right way? We're not giving opportunity for the constituents to go through the right channels, where we're forcing them to say something before they have any idea of what's happening. By going through with this at the next level, they will see proper plans, they will see proper evacuation plans, they will see proper road, um, measures, they will see everything in black and white, and will go on proper exhibition. We're at the moment always saying to them, hey, you know what, we're going to raise this by another level, but we don't know what's going to happen. It could be this, or it could be that. By us giving the constituent an opportunity to actually see visually what's going to happen, and for them to raise their concerns with us that back, I think that's the best way about it. And that's what I believe should happen. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So... So I'll put the, the foreshadowed motion, which is the motion to defer. All in favour, please raise your hand. Those against? So I declare that the motion to defer carried.
I'd like to record my name that I voted against a deferral.
It'll be recorded. It's a planning matter. Yeah. Thank you.
It's nice. Mr Mayor, I'd like to declare a interest that I forgot to declare.
Yes, on what matter?
Plan 02, 22 Box Road. I live across the road, non-procurnary, less than significant, and I'd be leaving the room.
Lovely, thank you. Okay, everyone, we're item, on item Plan 02, um, page 72 with the recommendation on page 73. Do you have a mover that way?
I'll move it that way, Mr Mayor.
Move councillor Rhodes. Secondaire councillor Amun, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare carried. Thank you. Can someone else of councillors come back in? Next item is Plan 0, sorry, I didn't realise you weren't, you're still, my apologies. Um, next item is Plan 03, uh, Rural Land Strategy, page 79, tab 3, recommendation on page 80. Do we have a mover?
Happy to move that way.
Move councillor Rhodes. Secondaire? Secondaire councillor Amun, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare carried. Next item is Plan 04, page 88, tab 4, with recommendation on page 88.
Happy to move that way, Mr Mayor.
Move councillor Rhodes. Do we have a secondaire?
I'm happy to second, but I just want to confirm that it'll be all going as Flynn. Is that correct?
Yes.
As per the book? Yep. Yep, happy to go that way, thank you.
Secondaire councillor Amun, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour.
Sorry, Mr, sorry.
One second, councillor Harald.
I thought we had a discussion at the forum.
This is the other road. This is the one that's parallel to it. So this is the one that's off the set of lights, so as soon as you turn in, it's that multiple road, right? Next month is the one parallel, which is the one that... To the public school, yeah. But, yeah. Um, next item is Plan, oh, so all those in favour? Against, I declare unanimous. Next item is Plan 05, page 107, tab 5, recommendation page 107.
Happy to move that way.
Move deputy mayor, secondaire councillor Rhodes, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare carried. Next item is Plan 06, page 114, tab 6, recommendation page 115, Middleton Grange Town Centre Minimum Lot Sizes.
Happy to move that way.
Move councillor Rhodes. Secondaire councillor Hadid, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare unanimous. It's a planning matter. Yep, unanimous. Next item is Plan 07, Drive Compliance Policy, page 119, tab 7.
I have questions, Mr Mayor.
Yep. Yep. Do you want to move councillor Hadid? Secondaire councillor Amun? Yep. What's your question?
Um, my questions, first of all, Mr Mayor, I will state that, uh, I think I was the councillor that took away council's privilege of, uh, of discretion on, on the enforcement, uh, uh, policy. So it'd be difficult for me to vote for this particular motion in favour of it. Um, the question is, uh, how many rangers do we currently have for our enforcement?
I'll ask the Director of Planning and Compliance to respond.
Through the CEO, um, I can just bring up the numbers now. Uh, we do a compliance work between the rangers and the compliance team. So there are two teams. Ballpark, I'd say they're around, um, the compliance team is only around four positions, the rangers are about, uh, eight or so, and the rangers do a little bit of the compliance work to support the compliance team, which is four compliance officers.
And is that the same number we've always had, or has it declined, or what's the situation?
I'd have to take that on notice, depending on how far back in time you'd like me to go.
Okay. Um, the 700 backlog, uh, how long has that been building up for?
Uh, again, I'd have to take that on notice. However, we've had a, uh, standing backlog, you know, that ranges between 700 to 1200 at any given time, um, at least for the past three years or so.
Okay. Um, well, I'd like to speak against this motion and put up another motion. Thank you.
Speak against or foreshadow?
Speak against and foreshadow a motion.
Yep, noise. What's your foreshadow of the motion?
I'd like to foreshadow the motion that this also gets deferred and brought back to a governance committee meeting, so that we can fully investigate exactly what is the situation and the problem. Um, so my motion would be simply that this motion is deferred to a governance committee for thorough discussion with the, with the councillors.
Do you have a secondaire? Councillor Green, I see you nodding your head there. Yes?
The...
Um, just before you go, can I ask, does a mover and secondaire happy just to defer this?
Yes, I would like to defer that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to defer.
Yep.
If the mover is happy.
All right, well, we can just make that the motion then, if everyone's happy. Yep, great. Um, I'll move that the matter be deferred, all those in favour. Declare carried. We can save your exhilarating speech till the governance committee.
I will wait, Mr Mayor.
Any veto?
No.
Plan 08, amendment, uh, um, page 141, tab 8, with recommendation page 142, Amendment of the SEP, Sydney Grouse Centre zoning map. Do we have a mover? Move councillor Rhodes. Secondaire councillor Hadid, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare unanimous. Any objections to unanimous? Unanimous it is. Next item is COM 01, Grants and Donations, page 146, tab 9, recommendation on page 146.
Happy to move that way.
Move councillor, move councillor, um, Rhodes. Secondaire deputy mayor, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare carried. Next item is COM 02, Council Meeting Dates, page 153. Deputy mayor?
Um, I have an amendment to make.
Or you have a motion to move?
A motion to move? I thought, sorry, I thought councillor did move. Um, I would like to, sorry, I'll just get the recommendation. So number, number one of the recommendation is the council meeting times. I'd like to, I'd like to change those to be on a Wednesday, the fourth Wednesday of the month, as they are now, and where we've, where we've changed them in December and, uh, November, just make it the Wednesday, so the day following what we have suggested there as the Tuesday, as we normally would do on a Wednesday.
So you're moving, so the many, the meetings be put on a Wednesday?
Uh, yeah, as, as we do currently, yeah.
Yep, great.
So that would be my first, um, amend, my first point. Um, number two, the proposed governance meeting days, I would also like to, um, include the council briefing session to follow the governance committee meetings on those second Tuesdays of the month.
Great, great. So technically, because we need the date, so we'll do that. I think the motion should say that the meetings be put on Wednesday, and the staff come back to us at the next council meeting in December with those actual dates.
Sounds good to me.
Yep. Secondaire happy with that?
Yep.
Yep, seconded. Seconded councillor Rhodes. Any discuss-
Question?
Yes, councillor Hall.
Aren't we supposed to have 12 meetings?
Uh, no, I think it's 11 minimum under the Act.
It is 11, is it?
I think it's 11, yeah.
Minimum 11, the 12 is if you have one in January, councillor. It's minimum 11, but if you have one in January, you get your 12.
We do two in February. So do we do 11 or 12, actually?
We don't have one in September?
Because of the, um, because of the elections.
I think, I think we should, yeah, that should, that should be looked at as well, because the election's on September 14th. Take probably two weeks for it all to be finished, so it's a whole month. It'll take probably two weeks for it all to be finished, so it's a whole month. Yeah.
Defer the whole item and ask us to relook at it on Wednesday, September.
Yeah, I think you guys can just come back, yeah. All right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare carried.
Mr Mayor, we're just considering that if the elections are on the fourteenth—
Yes.
They'll be declared, and the next meeting is on—
October.
—the second of October. That's a long way.
It's a long way, yeah. I think when it comes back to us, they'll look at doing that.
So maybe have one end of December or early—
What's that, sorry?
Maybe early October.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Yeah. Great, okay, wonderful. Next item is Corp zero one, quarterly budget review, page one fifty-seven, tab eleven, recommendation on page one fifty-nine. Move councillor Harrell. Seconded councillor Ro— seconded councillor Green, sorry. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare carried. Next item is Corp zero two, investment report, page one eighty-eight, tab twelve, recommendation on page one ninety-nine. Move councillor Rhodes. Seconded. Councillor Harrell, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare carried. Next item is Buzz zero one, or Bus. What do you prefer, Buzz or Bus, director?
Move that, Mr—
Page one ninety-eight, tab thirteen.
Move that way.
Move councillor Rhodes. Seconded councillor Harrell. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare carried. Next item is City Futures Report, CFD zero one, page two fifteen, tab fourteen, recommendation on page two sixteen. Move councillor Har— Hadid. Seconded councillor Harrell. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare carried. Next item is Operations zero one, kayak launch facility, page two nineteen. I have been advised—I'll refer to the CEO— I don't know if we necessarily need a motion on this for the kayak launching and—
That item's been withdrawn, councillors, so it won't be proceeding. We will bring it back at the next meeting.
Can I just make a comment? This has been brought up to me from people with great historic knowledge. Light Horse Park is actually light, one word, horse, one word, park, not Light Horse Park together. Can we make sure that we correct that in all our reporting in future? Good to know.
Yeah, so I think just taking it for procedural reasons, we'll move to receive a note to report. I'll move that way. Seconded councillor Rhodes.
Do we need—
With the appropriate spelling. Well, you can't just withdraw something from the book without—
Acknowledge that it is two separate words for light horse. It is light horse park, not Light Horse Park.
Yes.
Thank you.
I wonder what the bridge on—the sign on Liverpool Bridge says.
You know, the reason for that, if I may, is because they had heavy horses—
Oh, and they had light horses.
—which were used for pulling all the equipment. The light horses were the ones for the soldiers.
You should have looked at the sign on the bridge.
Hmm, I'm thinking—I think the sign on the bridge says one word. The sign—the Liverpool Bri— the bridge going— well, now Light Horse Bridge is, I think, is one word. I'll check the sign up there. All right, lovely. Move that we received and noted. Seconded. Councillor Rhodes, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare carried. Next item is Operation zero two, page two twenty-two, page sixteen, tab sixteen. I'll move that way. Do we have a seconder? Seconded councillor Rhodes. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare carried. Next item is Operation zero three, page two thirty-six, tab seventeen. Move councillor Rhodes. Seconded deputy mayor. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare carried. Next, we have the committees. Do you want to move them as a whole?
Yes, move them as a whole.
Move committees as a whole. Move deputy mayor. Seconded councillor Rhodes. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare them carried. We're now on questions with notice. Councillor Harrell, Lieutenant Cantello.
Ah, yes, I've got some comments to make.
Yep.
When we asked for this to be done, I raised some concerns about solar lighting not necessarily being the most appropriate in that area. The report I've got back, I do not agree with. I think the information provided isn't accurate, and the LED lighting, which is being referred to, is actually the same, whether it's used with solar lights or whether it's used on the street. So the benefits difference is not quite accurate. The argument that the cost is less, that's true. The cost is a lot less. But the point is, over a longer period of time, it won't be. The maintenance costs of maintaining solar cells and batteries, if you look at that, eventually, it would have been cheaper and more practical to put underground wiring in there. There are other issues there, too. Those lights are actually blocked by the tall trees that surround it, and that means we may not have sufficient lighting when it's needed, particularly if you've got rainy days. So I think— you know, I know it's an operational matter, and it's not our concern. But what is our concern is costing the budget. And so in that instance, I think it was a decision made that didn't really take into account the long-term effects of that. And the other issue there is Lieutenant Cantello Park itself. I believe there are toilet facilities there that do have power, there have to be pumps and the like there, so power would have been available to that. I can't understand why that wasn't used to do that. The other issue is the existing solar lighting around the playground centre there. When we were there at the awards day, I had a good look at them, and most of those will require some additional maintenance. Birds have managed to get on top of them and obscure the solar cells, and if that happens, they don't work, and then you end up with problems. So we need to be careful where we put in what looks like environmentally friendly alternatives, where in the long run, they actually cost us more. That's about my only comment. Now, and I thank the council staff for putting the report together, I'm happy with that. It's just there is another point of view, and it happens to be a subject area that I'm very informed about, and consequently, I would have— I made the comments I had. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harrell. So, you're happy with the contents?
No, I argue.
Okay, where are we? Okay. No, I've got nom. I've got nom. I've got an addendum booklet. Okay, addendum booklet, book five. No, I'm coming— yeah, we're up here still. We'll do the addendums. Sorry, I'm just going to go by order of my run, chief councillors. Plan zero nine, adoption of the Liverpool City Council Section Seventy-Eleven Australa Levitation North Contribution Plan. Page three, recommendation on page four, in the addendum booklet number five, which is the one that was handed out this— before the meeting started by Susan, Mr Neri, that one?
Happy to move the motion, Mr—
Do you have a seconder?
Happy to second.
Seconded councillor Green. Colonel Assas, the CEO, just in quick summary, what is the financial impact, for all those who are there?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll ask the director of planning and compliance, whose report this is, to speak on the matter, and if necessary, to ask Claire Scott to add any further information.
Through the CEO, can I confirm, is that the financial impact on council or the development industry?
On now— yeah, what are the contributions going up to?
Yep. I'll refer to Claire Scott, because she's here, and she can give a quick rundown.
Good afternoon, councillors. Through you, Mr Mayor. The developer costs will vary, subject to the size of the residential precinct that's going to be subdivided, and the number of lots within that subdivision. But generally, it is around about the seventy-two thousand dollar to about seventy-five thousand dollar per lot, approximately. But of course, that inflates with CPI, with land value indexation and land values in general. The alternate impact on council, if the plan is not uncapped, it's potentially heading towards a one billion-dollar shortfall in the plan.
Yep, thank you.
Sorry, I've got a question.
Yes, councillor?
Is my audio better? I've gotten rid of the headphones. That's not the question, by the way.
Yes, it has.
Okay. Am I correct that in the IPART report, it approved the raising of the cap, but still noted that there'd be a shortfall?
Again, I'll ask— Claire, you might just stay there.
Yeah, through the CEO. The IPART review did identify that there would still continue to potentially be a shortfall in the plan, and their recommendation was that council review the plan over the two years and submit a new plan within three years.
In that case, councillors, mover and second, are amenable to making that part of the motion, that the plan be reviewed in two years, as per the IPART recommendation, as per the IPART report view?
Sorry.
I'm happy with that.
Is it necessary, or does it happen automatically?
It's going to happen.
Yeah, but I think it's good if you— just to clarify council's position. I don't see what's wrong with that.
I can't see anything wrong with it, no.
Yep, so I can add that as a point seven?
I have a chance, I think he can repeat the word.
Just to have the— have the plan reviewed in two years' time, as per IPART's recommendation?
Yes, point seven.
Happy with that wording? All right, thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare it carried. Next item is Committee zero five, page one sixty-seven in the addendum.
Happy to move that way, but I have a question.
Move councillor Rhodes. Seconded councillor Hadid. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Item number six, the review of council's membership and the state of Westwark engagement, that the CEO is to come back to the committee with a report. There's no date that that report is coming back to the committee. Is that necessary? We could make that in ten years' time, if we like. I'd be happy with that.
Month, month and year, not just a month.
Does it need to be—
This is on page—
Oh, sorry, page one sixty-eight.
One sixty-eight, thank you.
The last item, before financial implications.
Item number six, we've come to the end, the CEO to come back to the committee with a report.
In—
Yeah. Look, with that one, I was hoping to come back at the December meeting. The reason we didn't put a timing is that if I can't do by December, I can definitely do it by February.
Well—
But I would like to say the December meeting. I'm happy for— I'm happy to indicate to you that we're working to December.
I'm happy to leave it off if it's going to give you more time. I'm happy to leave it as it is if it's going to give you more time.
All right. But, look, I think it was just left without specifying a time.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
I think that's the more realistic approach. To keep it as long as possible for another three years.
All right, wonderful. All right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare carried. Next item is pursuit Committee zero six, page one eighty, recommendation on page one eighty. Do we have a mover? Move councillor Rhodes. Seconded. Councillor Amun. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare carried.
Nom one, temporary asphalt footpaths, councillor Hagerty. Page two—
So we're going back into the booklet, page— page two hundred and ninety-one. You moving the motion?
I'll move the motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded councillor Goodman. Councillor Hagerty, go for it. Speak for your motion.
Yeah. So as was outlined in that description, I've had a chat with Camden Council, who have given me the sort of back-of-the-envelope costs for these. They're pretty significantly cheaper than some of the numbers we'd seen previously, so I think it's worth exploring, and obviously happy to put Camden council staff in touch with our council staff to do a bit of a lessons learned on some of these footpaths and work out whether, you know, how to do it, and where the best place is to do it.
I have a— an amendment that you might consider, councillor Hagerty?
Always happy to consider your amendments, councillor Rhodes.
Thank you, councillor Hagerty. Let's share the love. Councillor— nothing to— nothing wrong with the motion, I'm just thinking that we might need that council identify the position where temporary footpaths in Austral— I thought it was said, Anne Bleepington— could be put in. We haven't got them— we need them to identify it first, and we need them to provide back how much it would cost to do those. And I was thinking that perhaps even a timing then, in the— in the operational part of council. So I think that should be put into the motion, just to give it clarity.
What is it exactly, councillor Rhodes, you want in?
We need to identify the possible sites where we are going to put the—
Yep, so can I recommend that we— councillor Hagerty, a point three, that—
A report come back to council on the proposed— on the proposed sites.
By the end of February council meeting.
Yep.
And funding, how much it's going to—
Yeah, I think that will come—
Sorry, can I also— can I also chime in for my two cents where? Can I please suggest that, based on the community forum at Austral, that we also ask for the community's input on this? I know we say to identify the places where it's needed, but if we could do a bit of a community survey just to get their input, because it was a very robust discussion that we had at the community forum, and just to make sure that we're covering the basis that they were identifying as well, if the mover and second are happy?
Yep. Yep, just one second. Yeah, I just wanted to know if anyone was excited today with this one. So to put that into perspective, we have deputy mayor saying we do community consultation, or, you know, open it to the community for their suggestions, let's use that, all right, and where they see the priorities. And where they see the priorities, that covers that point. I'll continue in a sec. Councillor Harrell?
Yes, I'm probably asking for something similar. I'm concerned that if we put in these temporary asphalt roads, that that's what they will pass, that's what they end up staying. There are quite a few in Liverpool where temporary asphalt roads have remained for twenty years or more. So I think there ought to be a review period, so that—I don't have any problems with agreeing that we should do it, but I think they should be reviewed so that we can put the proper ones in when needed.
So if we—if we—I think—from the— from the feedback is, we've got, call it three main roads, Fourth, Edmondson and Fifteenth Avenue, and I think they're all going to be upgraded, hopefully within twenty years. I'm sure councillor Hagerty's going to make sure Fifteenth Avenue gets done as quickly as humanly possible. So—but then we can't— either way, that's three, four years, you'd want to think, at best, or whatever it is. It's a big project. So something temporarily there, I think we don't have to worry about that. You know, Edmondson, whilst it is—we've got the funding for Edmondson, but there still has to be something. Fourth Avenue, I saw someone today pushing prams on dirt, and it's just not a pretty sight. So I think we're pretty— we'll get something there. I think that's a key point, just get something to make it safe at least.
I wholly agree with that.
Yeah.
What I was referring to is, in Ashcroft and Green Valley, there are actually areas there leading to recreational— recreational areas and they still have asphalt parks, and that's 20 years ago.
Yep, great, CEO?
Look, thank you, uh, because of point three and because of point four, we can't actually now allocate funds and prioritise, kind of putting the cart before the horse so to speak. If I can ask that, uh, councillors, that items one and two, uh, both commence with the words, uh, that the CEO examine the-
Cost and, cost and funding sources.
The, the allocation of funds, just those words, examine, and then at number two, the CEO examine the prioritising of, and then a report come back to council. So we'll, I'll examine it, staff will examine it, we'll come back to you, report to you, um, and undertake, uh, the open community consultation. Because to say I'm gonna allocate funds, I've absolutely no idea if I'm allocating half a million, a million or, or five million.
Funding source.
Yes, I know, but yeah, yeah, thank you, sorry.
So I think if you just put, yeah, that council direct the CEO from the beginning of it.
The council direct the CEO.
Yep, cool. Mover, seconder happy with that?
Uh, just a minute. Like, I would like to move the word of temporary and replace it by a footpath. As long as you're going to do investigation and come back to us, let us, what is the cost, how much we, money we've got, contribution from Austral suburb, okay, and go for it. Now more temporary from my point of view and just to put, put past.
I think-
I don't want to do the work, double work. Double work, put asphalt and remove it and put in a, 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 a new footpath.
It's, councillor-
Coming back to us with our-
It, it ha- it has to be because Edmondson Avenue is being upgraded, right, and, but only certain portion of it. So, you've got, when it gets done, it's gonna be four lanes, two lanes each way with bike paths along the length of it. So that's happening, but it's gonna take years for that to happen, two, three, four years. So it's like, what can we do in the meanwhile, because kids are hopping off their buses now, they're hopping off the bus and they have nowhere to step. They're in a very dangerous scenario, so that's why the, I guess the whole point, what we talked to the community about is doing something in the meanwhile, because we're not gonna upgrade the road, we don't have the levels for the roads, we don't have all the engineering. Yeah, sorry, can you put your microphone on please? Yeah, it's mainly for those main roads, the big ones, is what we're- Yeah.
Because when you say Austral, Austral become thousands of people living in this suburb now. So if you're talking about a few main road, well, this is different issues, right, you have to specify that one.
Alright, well that will come, that will, that will come back in the, is the mover and second happy with that, or this will all come back in the report anyway? So-
Just note that, the, the, it has to be temporary footpath because that's the point of this motion.
Yeah. But your point will be taken councillor, I'm sure that one, let's see what the report comes back with.
Okay, um, just opposing remarks?
Yep, go for it.
Uh, two points, um, we, I, I get we've added some stuff, he, uh, we've added some stuff to this motion. Uh, we've also watered it down a bit, uh, make no mistake, I will continue to doggedly pursue this issue, I will not forget about it. Um, and just in relation to-
How, how, how have we watered this down?
Well, the original one, allocated funds and prioritised, now we're examining it, so-
So, so, so technically speaking, as a, can I call a point of order? As a point of order, it's, in the motion in its initial sense is not valid because if, if, under the code of meaning practice, if the money is not, uh, in the annual budget of council, then the motion has to talk about where the funding actually comes from and the amount of funding. So I think you just need to, yeah, we gotta be specific. So I think no one's trying to water it down, we just wanna make sure that it's inaccurate, it's a motion that complies with our code of meaning practice.
Alright, uh, and just in relation to councillor Harrow's comments about temporary footpaths in, uh, parts of Ashcroft, I, Ashcroft's been developed, uh, this is a bit, you know, area that hasn't been developed and will be developed and, and proper footpaths will be built as it's been developed. Uh, case in point, we put one along, uh, Bird Walton Avenue in, in Middleton, Middleton Grange, uh, four, four, five, six years ago, um, and in turn that has now been, you know, with further development, that has now become a, a, a proper footpath. So in a, in a developing area, um, there is a process to see these temporary footpaths replaced with permanent ones.
Yep, and councillor Hagerty, just for you, for, in councillors, it's section 10.9 of the coding mini-practice, motions requiring the expenditure of funds. So, oh good. Um, alright, wonderful, okay, glad that you continue your, we look to keep on driving this. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion all those in favour against a declare carried. Um, council, I now will call a recess till 4:10 PM, and we'll come back then, thank you everyone. Um, we'll now be in, uh, dealing with confidential items, confidential booklets. Um, I'm happy to, I, I'd like to move that we, well, that for conf zero through, that we move in, we move into confidential under section 10A, 1, 2, A and C of the Act. Um, but we'll do that, do that at the end of the confidential items.
Thank you everybody. Um, while we are in closed session, council resolved that, uh, this item, which was CONF zero three, be deferred until the next council meeting. Number one, a QS forfeit out, outlined in options one and option two, an independent business plan to be provided to councillors. Number three, the actual format offer referred to in option two that is fully costed. Number four, a comparison incentive for other leases. Number five, the methodology used for the fees and charges, can, uh, that was used for the fees and charges. Number six, what ages will be provide for, provided for in option one. Number seven, considering contributions derived from contributions planned, will spaces be reserved for residents? Noting that on page 761 of the confidential report, that the centre would have certain uses. Uh, number eight, uh, senior council advice on the legality of using developer contributions for an enterprise that is not restricted to residents and the nexus between the contribution and the service. Number nine, any community consultation required for contribution funds. Number 10, was there a needs to basis and priority conducted on the priority of the service, noting the infrastructure in the last few years? Number 11, is option, option three states a dollar amount that is the figure you, is that the figure used in the long-term financial plan? And what does the long-term financial plan look like with that figure? Number 12, has the rent outgoings been considered as per page 765 of the report? And that being the business conducted, I will now declare-
To be very clear, what's published is what is read out, what creates confidential, is the, what is talked about.
I declare the meeting closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Sorry, deputy mayor, what hap-
Sorry councillor Hagerty?
Bye everybody, thank you.
Uh, bye-bye. Uh, sorry, the mayor, sorry, uh, I forgot to mention before I close the meeting, the mayor on minutes will be deferred until the next meeting of council.